I'm a student at Harvard.
MIT, Caltech.
Columbia.
Our advantage? Support at home, plus great teachers and programs at Orange County Public Schools. Check out what's available for your child.
There are magnet programs, advanced placement and honors classes, and guidance counselors who help us choose the right courses.
There are dual enrollment classes with Valencia College, so students can earn college credit while in high school.
OCPS has programs for every type of learner, pre-kindergarten through adult.
You won't believe what you can do through Orange County Public Schools.
For more information, visit the website at ocpss.net or call 407-317-3200.
Well, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Orange County School Board. What a wonderful turnout tonight. Tonight, we are doing two very, very special recognitions. First, we've invited a very large group of staff members to join us this evening, and for very good reason. We are recognizing everybody who had a role in responding to the emergency that occurred at West Orange High School on December 4th, 2013. And I'm going to chat a little bit more about that response in a few moments here after the pledge and the moment of silence. But first, I'd like to call up to the podium and recognize one of the true leaders of that day, West Orange Principal Doug Szysinski. Principal Szysinski?
Thank you. If you will please stand and join me for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. May I have a seat?
Thank you, Principal Szysinski. And, you know, I was remiss. I should ask everybody to continue to keep in your prayers, the young man who was shot that night, that day, on the West Orange campus, because he was a true victim of all of this. And from all accounts, he is doing well in his recovery, thanks to the folks we're about to recognize this evening. As everybody in this room is aware, and as those watching on TV, I'm certain are aware as well due to the media coverage, last month, OCPS experienced an on-campus emergency when a student was shot during dismissal on a routine, what was until that moment a routine, high school day. We are relieved to say that that student is continuing to recover. The reason that we've invited all these folks down to the school boarding meeting this evening is because of the exceptional response and the teamwork in that crisis. Our district has received a great deal of praise in how the situation was handled, and that is entirely because of many of the folks in this room and many others who could not be with us this evening. First, I would like to start with the West Orange High School leadership and staff team. Could everyone from West Orange please stand and remain standing? The folks standing here, and countless others from the West Orange staff and administrative team, were truly the first responders at the scene on that afternoon. Literally within seconds of the incident, the injured student was receiving emergency care. And initial reactions took people directly to the location, where they secured the area and made sure that the students were safe, as were those already on the buses and waiting to board their buses. They also made calls to security and law enforcement in a prompt, diligent manner. West Orange staff ensured that the buildings were locked down and communication was accurate and fluid with law enforcement and with our district command center. This included everything from searching buses to the media, as well as evacuation plans for students that remained on the campus. Another key to the response was their communication with the parents, staff, and students through social media. And I cannot emphasize that enough, because in this day and age, when an emergency does occur, most often, the parents learn about it first from social media, and they feed off that social media. That communication gave real-time, accurate, and I think that's the key word, and I want to thank you all for that, accurate information to help alleviate tension, rumors, and the unknown for many rightfully concerned parents. It was a true team effort from the West Orange leadership team, which coordinated efforts on the ground to the teachers and staff, which ensured that the student's safety in the classroom was first and foremost throughout the school, and that all students remain safe. Principal Szysinski, will you please come forward to Ms. Babinski up at the lectern and accept certificates on behalf of your entire team? And again, members of the West Orange staff and administrative family, thank you so much for your prompt response to this emergency situation. And Doug, the entire board would like to shake your hand as well. Now, may I have everyone from safety and security please stand and remain standing? Don't be shy. On December 4th, literally within minutes after the incident, our district safety and security leadership team were advised of a student involved shooting. District safety and security personnel immediately deployed to the scene, along with our partners in the Orange County Sheriff's Office, to engage first responders, coordinate the school response activities, develop a common operating picture, and support critical decision-making. Our safety and security staff were also deployed to the incident command post, which housed key incident leaderships, such as the sheriff, to help channel critical information to the district policy group and ensure that district interests were maintained. Staff members were also assigned to Acoe High School, the site of the reunification center, to coordinate the safe transition of students from West Orange High School to Acoe High School, where they could be picked up by their parents and families. At the reunification site, district safety and security team members worked with other district staff and public safety personnel to safely reunite displaced students with their families. District safety and security administration leadership also activated and staffed our district emergency operations center and mobile command vehicle to manage the incident and coordinate district resources. The emergency operations center provided a critical role in documentation, making notifications, and supporting logistics of the incident, while the mobile command supported onsite, field-based operations. Personnel assigned to these functions provided a critical communication link between departments, such as transportation services, food and nutritional services, media relations, and crisis intervention teams, to ensure the needs of students, staff, and the district were met. District safety and security personnel continued to support the recovery of West Orange High School and conducted a comprehensive after-action debriefing with all affected personnel following the incident. I'd like to invite up to the podium at this time to shake the board's hand and accept a certificate for all of our security and safety personnel, our senior director of safety and security, Doug Tripp. Doug? I'm going to go off script for a moment as well. I especially want to thank Sheriff Demings and the Acoe Police Department and Winter Garden Police Department for their role in responding to this crisis as well. We are blessed here in our community. We have a wonderful relationship with our local law enforcement partners. And I think the thing that was most gratifying to me, Ms. Gould and I were there as quickly as we could get there at the time, all of us on the board, along with the superintendent, were attending a Florida School Boards Association Conference in Tampa, Florida. But the response was truly seamless. And I think that our community should be very, very proud of the level of cooperation and coordination we have amongst our law enforcement partners, both with OCPS and with each other. And the response that they had with the community was nothing short of remarkable and extremely commendable. So, thank you to our law enforcement partners as well. Now, could I have everybody from transportation please stand and remain standing? Transportation. All right, Jim. Come on down, Jim, if you could.
I'm still on buses.
We're on television. Don't tell you that. We got all those kids home by now. Come on down. Mr. Beekman is the head of our transportation division. And our drivers did an absolutely remarkable job in keeping our students on the buses and keeping them calm while waiting for further instruction. Our drivers transported students who were bus riders, along with students who were not, but were kept during the lockdown, to Acoe High School, where students could be reunited with their parents. A very large number of our bus drivers were willing to transport students home if their parents were not able to come to the school to pick them up, knowing that it would have gone well beyond their normal work hours. And our transportation managers did an amazing job making sure all the drivers knew what the plan was. And at this time, is Jennifer with us as well, Jim? Or did she make it this evening? Okay. I'd like to have Mr. Beekman come up and shake our hand and accept a certificate on behalf of his team. All right. At this time, could I have everyone from Acoe High School please stand? Who's here from Acoe? And you may be wondering why Acoe High School is represented here, because this was truly a regional crisis, and we are truly a family. And when one high school is imperiled, all of our neighboring high schools and school facilities step up, and Acoe High School under the direction of Principal Bill Floyd and his employees assisted with getting students off the buses and directing them to appropriate locations to wait to be called upon for pickup. Students were monitored in certain locations on campus until their parents arrived to pick them up, and were provided snacks from the Acoe High School cafeteria. While students waited for their parents, there were many staff members present to speak with them, especially those who were upset about the situation that had taken place. Once parents arrived, they were directed to appropriate parking areas. They were asked to sign in. Their identification was checked, and they were designated to the appropriate locations to pick up their child. Acoe High School's front office staff was available to answer phone calls and to take inquiries that any parents may have had. Staff members were also present to handle media contacts and relations, and the front gate was monitored the entire time to ensure safety and to make sure that the situation was kept under control. Principal Floyd, if you could please come forward to accept certificates on behalf of your team and shake the board's hand. And again, thank you for your wonderful response. Could I have everybody from Food and Nutrition Services please stand? Our Food and Nutrition Services, again, this was entirely a team effort. They stepped up that day of the crisis, and they literally fed every student in Acoe High School who had to wait hours before being released to their families and to their parents, and those from West Orange High School as well. And as you can well imagine, in a situation like this, that was quite a lengthy wait for some of those students. They also stood ready to feed any of the staff and administrative personnel also who needed nutrition. Nettie Watkins, could you please come up? Is Nettie with us? And accept a certificate on behalf of your team, and thank you on behalf of the board for all you did. All right. At this time, can I have our West Learning Community Administration and staff please stand and allow us to recognize you? And please remain standing if you're from the West Learning Community. No, no, no. Don't sit down. We're going to brag on you for a moment. Keep standing if you could. And how about our West Orange Principals and Assistant Principals? Are there any Principals here from the West Learning Community that we haven't previously had stand? Thank you for being here. And please, if you could, remain standing. Ladies and gentlemen, these administrators responded to West Orange the moment the first phone call came in that there had been a shooting on the campus of West Orange High School. From the day of that incident, and then numerous days following that incident, the administrators and staff of the West Learning Community reported to West Orange multiple times throughout the day to assist with supervision during morning arrival, class changes, lunch, and dismissal. Other staff members from the West Learning Community made themselves available to answer phone calls and take inquiries from parents. They kept administrators up to date with any information received from outside callers, and truly all pitched in to respond to this OCPS and community emergency. On behalf of the West Learning Community, if I could have Dr. Bridget Williams please accept these certificates and allow us to shake her hand as well. Thank you, Bridget. And lastly, as we all know, incidents like this do not end with the conclusion of the emergency. There are additional needs that need to be taken care of, counseling that needs to be provided. And that was also provided to our West Orange students and surrounding schools as needed. Well, all of our, excuse me, psychologists, social workers, counselors, and support crisis team staff, please stand and remain standing. A group of 35 crisis team members provided amazing support to our students, our staff, and our parents after this crisis. This team met with students in groups and individually to counsel them. They handed out informational sheets to help explain any feelings or emotions they may have after an ordeal such as this. They saw dozens of students a day, even conference with parents as needed outside of school. To date, follow-up services are being provided for identified students who are requiring further assessments and recommendations. And I'd like to have Ms. Mary Bridge please come down and accept certificates on behalf of our team and our heartfelt thanks for all they have done. Thank you, Mary. On behalf of the board, I want to thank everybody once again. I also want to share with you that it's my fervent desire that we don't have to do another recognition like this for decades, because no school system and no school community should have to go through this. But your response was truly remarkable, and we thank you for that. With that, let me turn it over to you, Ms. Gould, to say a few words.
Thank you so much. It is an honor to be in the room with so many of our everyday heroes that really exemplified what not only OCPS is about, but what our community is about. And the day of and the day after, the community stepped forward and said, "This is not what defines our school." What defines our school is the A that they just received. Yay! Big round of applause for that. Mr. Larson had something to do with that as well. And really, the love that came out, you know? I'm a firm believer in good comes out of bad, no matter what. And if, for those of you who don't subscribe to the West Orange Times, I'll give them a plug, because they really highlight a lot of the great things that happen in our community. And one of the things that they shared with the community was the banners kids made from Acoe to the sports teams at West Orange, welcoming them, and then West Orange came in and beat them. But, you know, that's okay. And the PTA who supported. And you know what? Attendance hardly went down the next day after this, because people knew this is not what defined the school. It was truly about the heart of that school and the great kids that we have there, and the wonderful community, and the excellent teachers and staff and support system that we have there. They all understood that and still do today. So, I want to thank you. And there's so many other community heroes, and parents, and organizations that continue to wrap their arms around not only West Orange High School, but many of our schools in the area. And I cannot thank all of you here today and all of those listening that do that every single day. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Let me shift gears from the somber to the celebratory. We have tonight another group of very, very special students that we want to recognize. And that is for some pretty, and this isn't my script, they do give me scripts for this, cool students. I'll have to talk to staff, because I've hit an age where I say "cool." It just doesn't ring right anymore. That we call Orange County Public School PRISM Scholars. In case you are not aware of the PRISM Scholar Program, it was developed by the Central Florida School Board Coalition to recognize student performance and proficiency in higher-level science and math curriculum. The goal is to catch and recognize those students' successes early in their K-12 experience, to encourage those students to continue with their STEM careers, and to monitor their progress as we make sure as a system that they are getting the rigor in science and math all the way through to their graduation. Eligibility begins in the 7th grade and goes through the 12th grade, where students must maintain a 3.0 GPA in math, science, and technology courses. They must maintain a 2.5 GPA overall, and also participate in STEM clubs and competitions. It may sound easy, but it is not, because I'm so sure, not sure, I'm sure all these students would agree that it is not easy by any means. They've all worked extremely hard to get to this point. In fact, by the 11th and the 12th grade, the students are also required to obtain a minimum of 25 hours of community service, and to participate in internships, job shadowing, and apprenticeships. So, without further delay, I would like to introduce a group of students that we're so incredibly proud of, because they make OCPS look so very, very good and are such shining examples of what we want all of our students to say. And I'm going to say one thing here, too, to each of the students being recognized tonight. On behalf of the board, we want to especially thank you for being wonderful role models, because what makes for a great public education system are great moral models such as yourselves. And I also want to thank and congratulate all the parents. None of this happens in a vacuum. It all happens because of great parental support coming from the home, and an emphasis on getting a great education and on focusing on the STEM fields. And not only that, but being committed, citizens of our community, through the community service. So, each one of the parents is to be commended this evening as well for the fine job you've done with your students. So, let me call your name. And as I call you, please stand and allow us to recognize you and remain standing. And then, after I've called you all, I'm going to ask you each to come up here and let us shake your hands, students. And then, Ms. Babinski over here on the far, your far-left-hand side has some certificates for you. From Corner Lake Middle School, Andre Maldonado Martin. And Andre, if you could, just circle around, starting on this end. And I'm just going to stay seated and call the names while you shake the board members' hands. Okay? Yes, board members, if you could stand while I call out the names. From Hunter's Creek Middle School, Brandon Wren, Ethan Hellinger, and Yasmina Bassey. From Southwest Middle School, Philip Corey. From Sunridge Middle School, Sarah Tatum. Are you related at all to Susan Corey?
No.
From Cypress Creek, Anna Matthew. From Timber Creek High School, Noah Bartfield, Michael Hoffman, Austin Logan, and Acilia Samson. From Freedom High School, Ishwar Damodar Ranmarin. And from Winter Park High School, Daniela Castro. That's all. And then, I'm going to take a point of personal privilege. Can I have all the parents of these fine students stand and allow us to collectively recognize you as well? Congratulations, parents. And folks, appears that I have forgotten one. David, what's your last name? Is it David from Howard that we forgot?
Is there someone else, too?
Oh. Have we missed more than one? Well, you know what? Don't be shy. Come on down. We'll get your name when you come up. What is your name? Kevin what? Ladies and gentlemen, this is Kevin Will from Bridgewater. Ladies and gentlemen, this is Kevin Will from Bridgewater. Yeah, I named you. What's your name? Graham what? And this is Graham Jordan from Southwest Middle School. And David Burno from Howard Middle School. It's no fun getting recognized if we don't say your name. Well, I want to thank all of you all again for being such wonderful examples, and thank you for the role models that you are for our fellow students. And again, congratulations, parents. As a parent myself, I know that these are the proudest moments that a parent has, so you should be very, very proud of your students. And with that, it is a school night, so I would be remiss if I didn't take a short break to allow you all to head home and I'm sure hit the books or maybe even grab an ice cream.
A baby is born. Cute. He's already surrounded by technology. By age four, she knows how to use a smartphone. He's reading. No, not from this, this. She's making a digital presentation. You don't even know what that is. He has an interest. No, not that, that. By middle school, she has built her own website and her first app. In high school?
With my Michelson Interferometer, I can measure down to the fraction of the wavelength of light.
Wow. The world is changing. And they are preparing for jobs that don't even exist yet.
All right. At this time, let's go right into our item 2.02 on our agenda, our strategic plan update. Dr. Jenkins, let me turn it over to you. But before I do, Dr. Jenkins, I just want to thank you as well for the response to the West Orange shooting incident. I don't think any team responds in the way they did without great leadership. So thank you on behalf of the board for your leadership in that crisis. I think it was exemplary. Thank you.
It is time, members of the board, for our annual briefing coming from our audit committee. And so with that, I will turn it over first to Linda Luntzey.
Good evening, Superintendent and members of the board. Thank you for allowing us a few minutes to give you an annual update on what's happening in the world of internal audit. We're starting with the textbook definition of internal auditing. It might look familiar to you because this particular definition does appear in most of the reports that my department issues. I want to just provide it by way of background as well as an explanation and emphasis that internal auditing is your independent, objective assurance and consulting activity. We report to you through the audit committee, and we are hoping to perform our procedures in a way that does add value and improve OCPS's operations. I want to emphasize to you that our department does belong to the Institute of Internal Auditors, which puts forth the professional practice standards that we follow. You may recall, some of you, that we went through a rigorous peer review process about two years ago when we had our processes evaluated. The auditors were audited and found to be fully compliant with those standards. And those standards do require that we adhere to a code of ethics that is published and mandatory for members of the IIA, the Institute of Internal Auditors. They view that necessary and appropriate for professionals whose work is founded on the basis of trust. So we do follow it both as an organization and individually. The principles being codified within that code of ethics are integrity, objectivity, confidentiality, and competency. And I am pleased to tell you that our staff strives every day, all day, to represent you well and to adhere to all of those performance principles as well as the code of conduct that has been established by our profession to describe expected behaviors that are in accordance with those ethics. So that background about our performance and our ethics kind of sets the table for the presentation that Jim will now provide as chairman of the audit committee, and he'll talk to you a little bit about the activities of the audit committee.
Thank you, Linda. It's a pleasure to be back here. I finally figured out it was about the seventh year in a row I've done this, and I could hang in there for a little bit longer, I guess. To tell you, we operate under a charter, which you all can read, and we oversee the audit functions of Orange County Public Schools, including all the things such as the financial audit, et cetera, school audits going on down, and we provide that required independence that's so important. Our primary responsibilities are to develop the plans, the activities, and make sure the structure's in place for the audit staff, ensuring there's no restrictions in internal audit, all the way to asking, you know, are you being, anybody restricting you or doing anything? We do that on a periodic basis, including we do that DNY, and review and concur in the appointment of the senior auditor. We review the effectiveness of the internal and the external audit function, and we serve as the auditor selection committee. We do that every three years, three NY, and we, they came in last time, they've been in for a year and a half, and a year and a half from now, we'll again make a selection, and we report annually to you. Audit committee members, this is, you saw this same group of people two years in a row. We finally have continuity, and I feel like we've got a great group of people up there. Just to give you an insight, when I was at Darden, I always looked for people to, on the left and the right, that could help me when I have weaknesses. And Rick Whitefoot, who's our manager, he's manager of internal audit at Darden Restaurants, he was on my Y2K committee. I was chairman of the project office, and he has great strengths in that area and really provides a lot of help. We have Charlie on there, he's a CPA, partner in a firm, so he's raising any of the issues that are coming up. He'll come in with any fresh new pronouncements or anything like that. Both Scott and Brian are excellent, outstanding people. So I just sit there and twirl the pot a little bit, and we have a good time. Okay. Our biggest, what did we do last year? Well, we reviewed and approved the annual entity-wide risk assessment. As I mentioned to you, a risk assessment is critical. You go to each department, you ask them what their strengths and weaknesses are, you ask them to identify across the board, whether it be financial, political, legal, whatever their concerns are. We work that up. Let's say two's low, 10's high, and if we get any high numbers, we go back, look at those risks and say, "Okay, what are we going to do? Will our audit plans cover it?" And so we sit down with the internal audit department, go over that, make sure all those things are integrated into the audit plan, and then you receive it for approval. And at that point, you can ask additional questions, but that's how we handle that. I think that's one of the major things we do. We also meet with the external auditors, which is ENY. We look to see what they're planning to look at this year, and we also go back, if there's any management letter comments from the year before, any weaknesses we perceive, we discuss that on the front end. This year, we held a special meeting to review the district's charter school oversight procedures. We received the booklet, the text at home, went over it, made suggestions and ideas. It was a very sound document. We're basically satisfied with it, so I'm very happy to see that. Dr. Baner has a good program there. We conducted the annual performance appraisal of Linda. We performed the committee self-assessment. We literally sit down and monitor ourselves, one to five, one being weak, five being very strong. We were proud of ourselves this year. We gave ourselves a 4.5, so it was between strong and very strong. We also monitored the internal department against the audit plan and how it's proceeding. The internal audit function itself, same group of positions. This one, though, this year, we have the CISA, which was very important. Barbara was very helpful. Barbara Jenkins is very supportive in helping us get that person. To me, that's one of the biggest issues. When I was at Darden Restaurants, Joe Lee would always say to me, "How's IT doing with the issues and all that?" So this will allow us to have somebody look into the programs on the front end for controls and procedures. We also can have that person work with your group on IT for attacks from the outside. So we're very happy to see that. I guess the takeaway points right now, as we provide that independence that's so critical for internal audit, and they report up to you, basically, we make sure that the audit plan is being accomplished, and we make sure that the audit committee actively oversees the function, and we do strive for maintaining things and trying to improve it. That's one of our goals. So that's what we did last year. It's been a pleasure serving you, and I'll look forward to another year. Thank you very much. Oh, any questions? All right. Short meeting, we're out of here.
All right. Mr. Ingersoll, I just want to say thank you on behalf of the board for your service. And many don't realize this, but Mr. Ingersoll just re-upped again to chair this committee. He does it entirely as a voluntary service to our community, and he and the other professionals who serve on the audit committee, we can't thank you enough for the time that you give to OCPS because it's an important function, and I think it's probably the most critical function that we have as far as oversight comes. Dr. Jenkins, did you want to say a few words as well?
Mr. Ingersoll knows how much we appreciate his work, and I tell you, every time he comes close to retiring, we always kind of nudge him for additional year. He did finally resist our urges for Cove. I'm hoping he will stay on with the audit committee, his expertise and his volunteerism, and really, his dedication in heart for the children of our community are commendable. And so from the bottom of my heart, thank you, Mr. Ingersoll.
Thank you, Barbara. Appreciate it. Thank you all very much.
All right. Let me go ahead and turn it over to Dr. Jenkins to recognize our newly appointed administrators.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have eight tonight. First, we have Stephanie Osman, who was instructional support teacher at Shenandoah Elementary. She will be the new assistant principal at Waterbridge Elementary.
Hi, thank you. I'd just like to thank Mr. Roach and the school board. I'd like to thank Dr. Jenkins and her staff. I'd like to thank Dr. Cupid McCoy and Mr. Rudzik and Mr. Kakara for allowing me the opportunity. I'd like to thank the amazing instructional leaders that have guided me, Kevin Storch and Mr. Rob McClell. And I'd also like to thank my family, my husband and my daughter and my two little ones at home for supporting me. I am super excited for my opportunity to serve the students, the staff, and the faculty at Waterbridge Elementary.
Next, we have Christina Dees, who is acting assistant principal at Meadowwoods Elementary. She will become the assistant principal at Meadowwoods.
School board, thank you. Dr. Jenkins, thank you. Dr. Jara, thank you. Dr. Vasquez, thank you. Thank you to Ms. Workum and Ms. Martinez for your mentorship and your support. I'd like to thank my family, especially my mom, and just a big thank you to OCPS for allowing me the opportunity to serve Meadowwoods faculty and staff in this capacity. Thank you.
Jane Lachecko was assistant technical director at Winter Park Tech. She will become the new senior director at Winter Park Tech.
I'd like to thank the school board and Dr. Jenkins, Dr. Jara, and Scott Fritz, Dr. Armbruster, thank you for your support and leadership. I'd like to also acknowledge the colleagues and mentors that are here as well, Alex Heidelberg, Rosa Grant, Chip Alfred, Andrew Jenkins, and Claude Floramond. And I also want to thank my husband of 35 years. Support noted. Thank you for the opportunity.
Then we have Cheryl Neely-Meer, who goes from acting to assistant principal at Freedom High School.
Hi, I'd like to thank the school board members, Mr. Rick Roach, Barbara Jenkins and her staff, as well as the Southwest Learning Community with Mr. Rudzik and Mrs. Dr. Cupid McCoy and Mr. Bailey for the opportunity to step on board in this capacity. As well as, I'd like to thank my mentor, Dr. Border, and some of the other acting principals and assistant principals, Ms. Kirby, for being here as well tonight. And then my children, Lucia and Nicholas, for their support tonight. And my husband was here, and I thank him for his support as well. Thank you all.
We can tell Nicholas is the shy one in the family. Mr. Roach.
Well, I really, I hit the jackpot tonight because I get to recognize three administrators, but they all three stayed home. So nobody's leaving me, and that's a good sign, I think. You know, we've got two of them, Cheryl and Christina, both have been at their schools and are staying there, and I think that's really solid. And I know your faculty speaks very, very highly of you. That's always a very good sign when that happens. Stephanie has been at a great school with Shenandoah. She's probably a little spoiled with Shenandoah Elementary over there. Such a solid community over there. But going to Waterbridge, which is a very exciting place, and you know, that's almost a K-12 campus there. Those elementaries, middles, and high schools are just maybe a couple of blocks apart, so it's a real exciting community. All three of those are brand-new schools. Waterbridge's very special to me. So listen, good luck to all three of you. I'm very, very proud of you. You've got a tremendous responsibility there and a great leadership role, and I know you'll do very, very well. Carrying that old District 3 flag. Thank you.
Ms. Moore.
While none of you are in District 7, I just want to say it's just really exciting to see the level of talent that we have here in Orange County Public Schools. And we're blessed that you want to stay with us because this district is not just made up of eight school board members, but it really is the teachers and administrators who make the difference for the children. So we really encourage you to stay with us at Orange County Public Schools, and I know you have a great leader in Dr. Jenkins to continue to mentor you and give you opportunities to rise in your careers. And thank you so much for being with us.
Thank you. Ms. Flynn.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to say congratulations to all of the new administrators. I wanted to highlight two. Ms. Lachecko is over Winter Park Technical Center, but that includes Avalon Tech Center for Excellence. And I've been out there a couple of times recently, and I really am impressed with all the programs that you're bringing in and how it's serving the students and the adults. So thank you so much for that, and we'll just continue to see that grow. And then, well, Ms. Osman is not in my district anymore. I do know Stephanie and her family quite well. She's a real go-getter. This is a wonderful family. They make you feel like you're not doing enough because they're doing everything. They have, you know, a newborn, first grade, is it first grade, Madison? Sean Osman is the president of my Kiwanis Club, and they do this with joy and exuberance and a love for children and a love for their family. And I just want to congratulate Stephanie, you're awesome, and Mr. Kakara, you got a gem there. So congratulations.
Thank you. Mrs. Robinson.
I too want to congratulate all of you tonight. It's really exciting to watch you step into new positions, and I want to say a special congratulations to Jane Lachecko. I'm looking very much forward to getting to know you better and coming out to visit the school and see it when it's done with the construction. So anyway, congratulations, all of you. You go enjoy yourselves tonight. Thank you.
Before I echo the congratulations, why don't we have the kids, they've always, they've done a wonderful job of sitting through this meeting so far. Nicholas, Madison, Nicholas, your sister, stand up and let us recognize you all as well for any other children out there. Well, on behalf of the board, let me say congratulations as well. I always share with our newly appointed administrators that are promoted that this appointment and promotion really signifies more than anything else trust on behalf of this board. Trust in your abilities, trust in your judgment, and most importantly, trust in placing the future of our community's children in your hands. So your loved ones and your families should be very, very proud of all you've accomplished. And with that, we're going to pause for a moment. It is a school night after all to allow you all to head on home, and again, congratulations, and we're really looking forward to great things from all of you. All right. Let's get into the business portion of our meeting. Any individual who would like to address an item on our consent or our non-consent agenda may do so by obtaining and completing a yellow speech. and completing a yellow, a yellow speaker form. You can get that from the Board Table from Mrs. McGill, who is the lady sitting at the far left-hand side of the dais. We'll call you to speak when the item you have signed up for is before the Board. Please understand that you will have three minutes to address the Board if you do choose to speak. If you have any scheduling constraints, please let us know. We'll try to accommodate those. Dr. Jenkins, do we have any changes to the agenda this evening?
We do, Mr. Chairman. Two items. Item 1601, that is a request to approve the resolution of the Orange County School Board Leasing Corporation. The meeting notice published date has been updated to December 29, 2013. That's the third paragraph, second sentence. Also, the date of the minutes was corrected to state December 10. Secondly, item 1602, request to approve the resolution of the Orange County School Board Leasing Corporation. The meeting notice published date has been updated to December 29, 2013. That's the third paragraph, second sentence. Both just technical corrections.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. The Chair finds cause to amend the agenda as requested. Can I have a motion to do so? It's been moved by Vice Chair Gordon, seconded by Mr. Roach. Is there any discussion or debate on the changes to the agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Show the agenda amended as proposed and moved. We have nothing on our public hearing agenda this evening. So, we, Board Members, we are now into the consent portion of our agenda. Are there any questions, Board Members, on anything on the consent agenda? Or discussion or debate? I don't believe I have any speakers on the consent agenda. So, seeing none, Ms. Moore has moved that we adopt the consent agenda. Can I have a second to that? It's been seconded by Vice Chair Gordon. Is there any debate or discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Show the consent agenda adopted unanimously. We are now into items 16.01 and 16.02 of our non-consent agenda. At this time, I am going to recess the regular meeting of the Orange County School Board and call to order the meeting of the Orange County School Board Leasing Corporation. First action item for the Leasing Corporation is requesting approval of the minutes of the Orange County School Board Leasing Corporation dated December 10, 2013. Can I have a motion to approve those minutes, please? It's been moved by Ms. Flynn. Is there a second to that motion? Seconded by Ms. Caddell. Is there any debate or discussion on the motion to approve the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Show the minutes adopted. The next item is item 16.01, requesting approval of a resolution authorizing the conversion of the Series 2008B Certificates of Participation to a New Index Floating Rate to a renewal period of approximately three years and the execution of related documents in connection therewith, including a First Amendment and renewal to continuing covenants agreement. Can I have a motion to do that, please? It's been moved by Ms. Gould. It's been seconded by Ms. Caddell. And again, Board Members, if anybody has any questions, that's essentially restating what is written on item 16.01 in your written agenda. Is there any debate or discussion of that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Show that motion adopted unanimously. The next item is item 16.02, requesting approval of a resolution authorizing up to $74 million aggregate principal amount of refunding certificates of participation, Series 2014, and the execution of related documentation, including amended and restated Schedule 2004A-1 to the master lease, amended and restated Schedule 2004A-2 to the master lease, Series 2014 Supplemental Trust Agreement and Certificate Purchase Contract for Series 2000 Certificates. Can I have a motion to do that, please? It's been moved by Ms. Moore, seconded by Mrs. Robinson. Is there any discussion or debate on that motion? Again, it's essentially restating what is in your printed version of Agenda Item 16.02. Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Show that motion adopted unanimously. With no further business to address, I will now adjourn the meeting of the Orange County School Board Leasing Corporation and reconvene the regular meeting of the Orange County School Board. All right. We are on reports by attorneys, or attorney, Mr. Rodriguez. Do you have any reports, sir?
Mr. Chair, members of the Board, as you may recall, your meeting in December, you had an agenda item in which you approved the hiring of a replacement for Barbara Whitten, who had been our policy expert, as well as our ethics compliance officer and had assisted our organization in a variety of different capacities. I am proud to announce that tonight joining us is Ms. Amy Enval, who was approved in December. Amy, you want to stand and be recognized? Amy comes from us. She, first of all, graduated from the University of Miami in Ohio, not Florida, with an elementary ed background. She was actually a teacher for a number of years. So, she comes with that wisdom and experience and joins our team. She graduated from Barry University School of Law and has subsequently worked with the Ninth Judicial Circuit Court in Kissimmee as a judicial staff attorney. She worked as an Assistant County Attorney in Osceola County. She served as a general counsel for the Clerk of Courts in Osceola County and most recently was working with Barry University before we brought her over here. And I'm excited because she comes with a wealth of background and experience in procurement issues, which Mr. Eugene has been complaining about since I started here. He needed some greater assistance. So, I'm pleased to have her as part of our team and we'll introduce her to you in the next couple of weeks as we get a chance to introduce her.
Well, I'm glad you introduced Ms. Enval because whenever we have a stranger in the audience, we all sit up here and go, who's that really professional-looking woman sitting in the back of the room? And one fellow attorney to another, I should have known it was an attorney. Miami of Ohio, isn't that the cradle of coaches? All right. Well, welcome aboard, Ms. Enval. We look forward to working with you. All right. Dr. Jenkins.
Thank you, Chairman. A couple of things I'd love to share. First of all, reminder that we did leave for your reading enjoyment. Book that staff has been looking into, Smartest Kids in the World and How They Got That Way. Certainly want to encourage you to read it in your spare time. I know you have little spare time, but when you have an opportunity, it's a great read for public educators and those that administer policy for public education. Secondly, I'd like to note that on January 9, we had a joint principals meeting. Monthly, our principals meet with their area superintendent. January 9, we all got together for a joint meeting to celebrate some of our successes, to talk about matters like creating balance in your life as the stress has certainly increased over the past year or so. But we also talked about shaping our path to success and why we are moving more towards centralization around curriculum, around professional development, around assessment, because large urban districts have to have some consistency as we have revolving doors in some of our schools. In fact, data on our mobility has not improved. It's gotten worse since we've talked about it previously. The whole issue of homelessness and what our families have been impacted with here, we have to be mindful of so that we take it into account as we work in our schools with our students. And so, we reviewed some of our data and I will tell you, we understand that the bar will be raised. It's already intended that the bar would be raised. An oversaturation of A and B grades, then by statute, the percentage number goes up for how you achieve an A. And so, we talked about that. And if we looked at it graphically, honestly, it looks like we would have a dry, and this is not predictive. I want to be very clear. This is purely a simulation. If you use the new guidelines and the new cuts and the numbers that they will be raised, as a simulation, it would mean going from 111 A and B schools down to 85 A and B schools. And so, we just really wanted to talk plainly and frankly with our principals and all of our instructional team, as a matter of fact, around that issue. And there's a graphic that we used that they're going to put up on the screen. I wanted to share with you. They told me I couldn't actually play the song, but there is a graphic. And the motto, the song is, "What Doesn't Kill You Makes You Stronger." And the notion being that that bar certainly could have snapped that mouse and done great damage. Instead, he's using it as a bench press. And so, we talked at length about how do we create balance in our lives and how do we make sure we are bench pressing, helping our schools, helping our students to get stronger. When you see it coming, then you can't just put your head in the sand. You've got to start preparing for it ahead of time. And so, had a really good time talking with administrators. They talked, they shared around issues and strategies. The other thing they really brainstormed a lot about, and we talked about, mentioned to you briefly, when we were talking about making sure we challenge our most talented students. And so, we're going to have a new campaign. The ad campaign is really around our super scholars. I was here over Christmas break for a photo shoot, but the external message is around our super scholars. But internally, we've got to use that information as well around making smart popular, around pushing students to their greatest ability, not being satisfied. I will tell you, if you look at that picture, those are bright young people. I had a chance to talk to them during winter break when we did the photo shoot. They are brilliant. But they started in kindergarten, in somebody's kindergarten class, and had to make it all the way through to 12th grade. And we want to make sure we are instilling in all of our children the eye of the tiger, making them all champions, making smart popular for all of our children. We've got to have a culture shift in all of our schools throughout the district so that we intensify our efforts around smart being the way to go. And in fact, we want to make sure we drive home the point. Smart is not just something you are. It's something you can become if you work hard. It's not just what you are. I understand some children are born talented. That's absolutely true. But smart is also something you can become if you work hard. And the stories behind these young people will just make you proud to be in public education. And we want to push more of our students toward that. As much as we do it with the super scholars, we've got to do it starting in kindergarten. How do you make smart more popular? So, had a great meeting with very motivated, very capable principals that are doing the work on the front lines, encourage them so that they can in turn encourage our teachers to get the work done on the front line. What you can't change, you manage and you work by those rules and those guidelines and you win by playing smart. And so, wanted to share that with you since we talked with all of our administrators and shared with them some highlights from the book as well. I wanted to share that with the Board this evening. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins, for your leadership. Ms. Flynn.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Superintendent Jenkins. I think that is wonderful. I just, and I know you're, I know OCPS is doing this. We emphasize the super scholars. We emphasize the lower group. We want to make sure the kids in the middle who are bright, that they soar as well. So, I have to put that in there because we've got some bright kids that, you know, might just not be engaged. And I know that's part of it. I also think this sort of dovetails on a conversation that we had at the Coalition yesterday is about managing the message to our parents in our community. There's so many unknowns out there right now with who does the curriculum, who does the standards, who does the test and that type of thing. And if maybe we had talking points or we kept something on our website or that we put out there, sort of the, you know, even that app we were talking about, but the, just the latest information that's coming out. Because I think if we have to manage the message, it showed yesterday about, yesterday that there's so much confusion out there about innuendos that the governor says and then this legislature is suggesting this. And there's a lot of confusion out there, I think. And so, I would just like to see us have some type of messaging that's going out there, even if it's, even if it's to say, "We don't know." That's where we are. But just that, to give that out to the community. I think they need that. Thank you.
Mr. Roach.
Just wanted to support you, Dr. Jenkins, on the smart popular thing. I think that's really, really important because it can be misinterpreted and that's, that's not a good thing. I also want to add that, just an experience I had probably six years ago that still sticks out in my mind, when I was invited by a counselor to sit in on a small group discussion of third-tier, third graders. And if you don't know what that means, if you're listening, that's kids who have failed the third grade for the third time. So, they were 11 years old in the third grade. But she was, they were reading a book called Seven Kinds of Smart. And I thought, I think it's significant to add in here that there's a lot of different ways that people can be successful and therefore smart, other than just going to these top universities. And so, I don't want to downplay that, but I do want to say we have so many kids with so many gifts that unfortunately are just not honored in the system that we have today. And that's, that's, that's something I just felt like, as you, Ms. Flynn, I had to get in there. Thank you.
Ms. Gordon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know that Dr. Jenkins have heard it over and over again from me. And I think also this Board, basically, I'm excited. I'm excited about this. This is a great beginning for us. I think just the whole thing. And I, and I always feel we need to take it a little bit further. And as I say, we have a great website. Our schools have websites. And I think that this should be flashed on everybody's website. But one area that we do want to add in, we want to look at the occupational clusters. We want to, we have great grads. And I know these are all top scholars and this came, you know, from the, from the Coalition, which I think is awesome. But I think we need, if we want to make smart popular, we have got to look at our entrepreneurs. And I'm not just saying it because of the Oak Ridge Junior Achievement Academy that they have there and entrepreneurship, but we have got to emphasize that because you're not basically going to become wealthy until you are in your own. Because even though they are going to these popular colleges and they're top, they're not always financially stable. But a lot of times, those students that are their own entrepreneurs and they, and they have that. So, I would like to see us go the extra step. This month, it may be this group, make smart popular and encourage our children to become entrepreneurs because they have dreams, they have visions. They don't even have to go to college. You know, they can go to one of our technical schools. They can come up and have a vision and a dream and a mission. They could read a book and say, "Hey, I can do that. I can do that. I saw it in a book and I believe I could do it." Because what we talked about when we did the gifted program, we don't know what's in the heart of a child. And look what's happening now in our gifted screening, how we are discovering students that we never thought would even qualify for the gifted program. So, we cannot stop here. This cannot be one picture coming before this Board. It has to be, where are our grads that are top entrepreneurs? Where are our grads that are owning their own businesses? Where are our grads that are running these top companies? They're doing it and we want to see them. And we want them plastered all over our websites. If it's on a monthly basis, we want them to know that we at OCPS can produce. And Dr. Jenkins, you have got to remake this picture and you've got to put UCF on that jacket.
Two things. One, I loved what you were saying about really having students envision and their families envision from kindergarten. And we've talked a little bit about this at workshop and at the Board Table before. How do we inform the parents and the kids of all the opportunities that are out there? And, and as Ms. Gordon was saying, you know, make smart popular is not just getting admission into college, but what kinds of jobs can they get? And, and our job is to actually create people that can have high-quality careers. So, I think we have to get literal about that. I think we have to get literal and give them the roadmap. And there's some great resources with College Board and all those other things. But, and, and as I was sharing with you earlier today, we had Mike Armbruster and Chris Bernier and Dr. Jara. And I had a great meeting with Leslie Hellem today about that kind of career pathing in the high tech. And they're going to be doing a community asset to find out where the workforce flow is coming from and where the gap is in our community. And workforce with Pam Neighbors is also doing the same thing across all other industries. So, that's going to give us some hard data that we can brag about what we're already fulfilling and have capabilities to fulfill that some people don't even know we do sometimes, and identify some of those gaps that we can start marketing right from kindergarten. Pique.
Thank you, Ms. Gould. All right. We're, committee reports, Board Members. Ms. Moore, communications? Ms. Moore, communications.
Yes, I just wanted to report to you, I did have an opportunity to meet with Mr. Bachelor and, and talk to him about some of the plans. And there'll be a communications meeting later in the month, and I can outline some of that further. And Mrs. Robinson, I had the opportunity to visit Pinewood just yesterday, and it was just absolutely remarkable to me how well that school is doing and what the iPads have meant, and the quality of instruction, Dr. Jenkins, has just improved immensely. It's just really, I mean, it's amazing to walk into that school just a couple of years separated to see the difference. So I get upset when I hear people say that education in Florida is not as good as other states, if they should have been on that tour with me to Pinewood and have seen. So I anticipated the meeting will have some discussions surrounding additional opportunities to bring the public in to see what Common Core and what digital instruction really means to the rigor and the quality of instruction here. So anyway, that was exciting. And so I'll probably announce that meeting or get it on your schedules in the next couple of weeks. Thank you.
Mrs. Gordon.
Again, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had an opportunity to attend the Aloma High School Chancery Sheila and Sunrise High School commencement ceremony that was held at the Northland Church in Longwood. And I want you to know that I've never seen so many proud students. Erica Dunlap, the former Miss America, I think by 2004, maybe, the former Miss America was the inspirational speaker. And it was just wonderful to see those students graduating in their caps and gown. And then tonight, in my report, if you go to 19.01, you will see Orange County Government Community Action Board report, and you can see the sentence in which you are a part, and what they are doing for you and our students here. But tonight, I wanted to highlight that tonight is graduation, and I'm hoping that we might be able to surprise them and go down W.D. Judge off of John Young on our way to our mission, where we're going tonight, and just drop in at Northwood Community Center and the Hal P. Marsden Community Center, where there is a GED graduation. I think that that would shock them, where we just pop in for a few minutes on the end. It ends at 8:30, so if we can just run by there and then go do whatever. But I think that would be a wonderful shock for them, and they are getting their GED. So they have a graduation and a reception. I'm excited about that. One other point that I did want to make, I met with, I've been meeting with the superintendent also in reference to things happening in District 5, but as it relates to the sale tax. And I had an opportunity to meet with Mr. Bachelor and Sherri Paramore, and for historical documentation, Mr. Ralph, Attorney Ralph Armstead, because of the historical nature of Orange County and in District 5. And we did ask Mr. Bachelor to call Mr. Ulysses Floyd, he's sitting in the audience there, and to call the President of CTA, Diane Moore, so that when we do our pitch for the sale tax, that they would be able to see what has been accomplished and what needs to be accomplished, and how so many schools are left off the list and were not able to get repairs. So we're looking forward to them giving Mr. Bachelor their input as to where they are going to fit in the community as it relates to the renewing of the sale tax once we give the pitch for it. I'm excited about it because everywhere I go, right now, Pine, not Pine Hills is on the list, Molly Ray is on the list, and Rockleigh is on the list, Ivy Lane is on the list. There are so many schools on the list, and if you could remember, they were supposed to almost be with Meadowbrook like first on the list. But we waited our turn, and everybody said it took a while, but to me, it did not. Because I really want to thank the superintendent, especially this board, and Mr. Morris and his wonderful staff for the beautiful work. I, I had the opportunity last night to host the former, and Joey and all of this board knows him, the former president of the National School Board Association. He is here in town with the Housing Authority and HUD, and they're all out of Disney. So we went out there, so I was able to give him a three-hour tour of the fabulous high schools that we have built. And when he pulled up on the campus, he looked around and he said, oh, my goodness, these are not high schools, these are universities. And then I gave him an opportunity to go into the blighted areas because his goal, he works in the public housing. So he asked me to show him public housing in our community, and I took him all over center of Florida and showed him public housing. And it was in a very beautiful sight. But the nicest sight was that there are possibilities, because when people see beautiful elementary schools being built, they are going to do something with their housing. And as he went through, he said he's going to go back and talk with Attorney Vivian Bryant, and let her know, Vivian, why is this happening in your community? This should not be there. He said this, they should have this space, they should be able to let the school kids come, there should be no glass around this for the safety of the children. And I just thought that that was so unique, that those two entities can blend together with the housing and the building of beautiful schools, and having the Housing Authority to work with us to make our community more beautiful. So that, that was a wonderful experience for me all this week, and especially on last evening. So my report is attached, and I do hope that we get an opportunity to just surprise them for about five or 10 minutes and say hello to the graduating class of, I think it's 24, no, 20, 2013. It'll be the December class of 2013, but they're doing it tonight. Okay, thank you so very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Gordon. Mr. Roach.
Is this a good time to mention the two students? It's up to you, I'm just trying to.
It is. Let me, let me do this. Let's finish committee reports first, because I think we should end on that note, Mr. Roach, since it's such a somber note. So I'll come back to you, Mr. Roach. Ms. Flynn, you said no on legislative committee report, right?
Right. I'm going to.
Did you want to say?
Right, I'm going to call a committee meeting in the next few weeks, next few, next couple of weeks, and when we can get Scott down here. But I do urge everyone to read his updates, because what's happening up there has a direct bullseye on our schools, so thank you.
All right. Ms. Cato.
Don't we have the digital pilot tour with the legislators next week? Is that correct? That would like be a week from tomorrow. So, you know, that'll be an opportunity to speak to them.
It's, it's a Wednesday, isn't it? It's a Wednesday, and this is in conjunction with the Orange County Council of PTA. They're doing their legislative breakfast, and we're sort of dovetailing, or doing it in partnership with the PTA, so they can do their legislative breakfast, and we can have the legislators there to view the digital. I don't know how many legislators are RSVPing, though.
There's nothing like hosting a party, and no one comes, but at least we put, you know, at least we asked them to come and see what we're doing. And if only one comes, that might be our advocate.
All right. I've got, Ms. Moore.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to jump in on that conversation. I know that's being handled through your committee. Mrs. Flynn, do you know if on the RSVPs, if we're encouraging, if they call in to say the legislator's unavailable, if we can then do a follow-up to encourage their aide to come?
I think the invitations are going out through the Orange County Council of PTA, so I can ask the President how they're handling that. But usually it is a request, from what I remember in my days as the President, is that you ask for the legislator to come. And usually by default, if they don't, they send their aide, so.
Well, hopefully we can do, because we know those aides are, are important, and at least they at least would share with the legislator their impression of it, because I was so impressed the other day. It would be a shame for them to not attend. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Could I talk a little bit about this, I mean, sort of a good segue. The other day, I visited Liberty Middle School, which is one of our seven pilots on the integrated digital technology. And it was very interesting, because I had some really candid conversations with the, with the principal, and it's, it just really, the conversation that I had with him, it just sort of underscored that we're doing this pilot study versus a large-scale experiment. I say that all the time, Mr. Eugene, is that, you know, we're doing a small-scale study versus a large-scale experiment. Because there are some things that are coming out that they didn't think of. You know, we thought of, you know, we thought of theft, breakage, loss, but we didn't think of kids using it at home with, you know, just certain aspects. But the one thing the principal said is, there's no turning back. There's no turning back. I asked one class, an intensive reading class, you know, what do you guys think of this? And they go, the one answer, we feel more mature. You know, it was seventh or eighth grade, it was middle school. But what I'm saying is, it's like, there's no going back. You can't go back on this. There's a lot of questions, you know, which is why we're doing this as a study, a lot of questions, but a lot of things we have to hash out. But overall, they're, they're very, very positive on it. So I hope all the board members can go and get the tour. And I'm sure you've toured your, your, your schools to do it. But it is good to see others, and it'll be good to be there with the legislators and emphasize different areas that we're bringing, we're seeing in our schools.
All right. Board members, I've handed out the work session schedule before we adjourn here, and before I go, Mr. Roach, to bring us in for a landing. So we've got one on Thursday, as you can see, on CTE, and I know how we deliver our CTE and how we align it is of intense interest to a number of you, including myself, but a number of other board members, all of us, actually. And then we've got the long-awaited ELLA Metis Report coming up as well. One announcement I do want everybody to please mark on your calendar, and hopefully, most of you know about it. If you don't, I apologize, we haven't met in so long with the holidays. But on February 5th, at 5:30 PM, we have a major fundraiser for Change for Kids at the Junior Achievement Center. So February 5th, 5:30 PM, Junior Achievement Center. We have a major fundraiser for the Change for Kids campaign. I will tell you, the commitments are coming in well. We hope to raise a substantial six-figure sum of money for the campaign at that. We're at commitments already above $150,000, so we're doing pretty well. And we've, and we hope to bring that money in before the end of February. February 5th, 5:30 PM, okay? And frankly, the more board members we can have there, the better. I'm hoping we have. What's that? I hope so, too. And, and the fundraiser, it'll be sent, the electronic version of the invite will be going out Thursday or Friday, so I'll make sure every one of you is on that distribution list. And Ms. McGill, can you, does anybody have any objection if I have, Ms. McGill, put it on your schedules, just even if it's as tentative? So put it on your schedules. Also, shifting gears here a little bit to a wholly different subject, and I don't know if this interests anybody here at this table, I mean, I know you're all interested, but I don't expect anybody to show up. But you're certainly invited on January 29th. Ms. McGill, I'm blanking out. Have to pull out my iPhone here. We have a meeting, and let me give you the time. It's at the Winter Park Health Foundation on January 29th. It's during the day, I'm sorry, but you'll understand. What time is it? At 3 o'clock with the major health systems in Orange County to discuss and get the conversation going about our nursing initiative, and also to talk about some of our other school health needs. So we've been working hard, and we have commitments from senior-level administrators from all of our major health systems in Orange County to be at that meeting. So that's on January 29th, which is a Wednesday, at 3 o'clock at the Winter Park Health Foundation. And, you know, I wasn't about to put that on y'all's calendar, but you want it on your calendars, if anybody, okay, well. And Ms. McGill, do me a favor, don't let me forget, well, I'll just ask you, to make sure we post that meeting, because I suspect we'll have at least two board members or more there. So we need to post it as well. Okay? We are going to do a strategic plan update, it's my intention, sometime in the next month and a half, two months, on the philanthropic strategic plan. Debbie Pedraza's sitting in the audience, and I just want to thank the superintendent for that hire, it's been very beneficial to us. We're making tremendous progress on it, y'all, as far as the major initiatives, and I think you'll be astounded when you hear the update on where we're at in terms of the dollars that we've raised so far. And it's also had the unintended, well, I shouldn't say, it's also had the intended, because this was always the intended effect of getting word out about our needs, and other issues have bubbled up that had not occurred to us to include in the plan. So it's, it's going very, very well. That's all I had for announcements. And with that, Ms. Gould.
You spurred something that I had thought about earlier. I, I just wanted, because this is such an anomaly with our, our high school pursuit on the west side of town, that the staff-to-staff meeting that is in that timeline plan that Mr. Mark Chaney had outlined along with Mr. Rodriguez at our December meetings, is January 20th. And then depending on, of course, the outcomes and what happens, a lot can happen in a month, I think already on our calendars is a tentative date for the joint board meetings with Orange County in February. So that will continue to be updated on our website. So for those of you who are tracking this out in, in the world there, please keep checking our websites, and then I'll continue to post what I know as I know it through my social media sites. But I know I'm getting questions and, and people wanting to know what's happening, so I just wanted to get that out there on the record.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Just to clarify, Ms. Gould, it's January 30th, not the 20th, 20th, sorry.
January 30th. 30th.
That's, is that the, the date for the joint meeting, Mr. Gould, Rodriguez? The staff meeting?
The staff meeting, correct.
We haven't picked a meeting. And, and you know, I think the intention under the act, I probably don't need to say this, but I'm going to say it anyway, is that the senior-level staff meet at that meeting. So I would not encourage anybody from the board to be there, I'm not going to be there. That's under the alternative. What is that resolution process called technically in the statute, Mr. Rodriguez?
I know it's Chapter 164.
Under Chapter 164, it's supposed to be a high-level staff-to-staff meeting, and then we're in the process of working to schedule a date for the joint meeting, but that will occur, am I right about this, Mr. Rodriguez, before the end of February?
We, we, sorry, we have a tentative date set in February, but we need to confirm with everyone's calendars and make sure that that date's been approved. But it's looking like mid-February would be when the joint meeting takes place between the two boards.
Yeah.
Thank you for clarifying, since I messed up the dates. But I just want people to know that this process is moving forward, that we have dates, conversation is open, all of those things. Because during the holidays, obviously, it got a little quiet, and they're wondering, so.
Mr. Roach.
Okay, let me get this off the table here. I'm going to speak for Mrs. Flynn as well. She asked me to mention this, since I was on the microphone with it. But I would like you to keep in your thoughts and prayers of families of two of our Orange County Public School children. Mira Sol Gonzalez, Gonzalez, excuse me, was a fifth grader at Ventura, was killed when she was hit by a truck here recently. I read that in the newspaper, I wasn't sure exactly. Was just walking home from school, very sad. And then, and then, and kind of a unique day in this, this kind of a report is, on the day we had our Christmas celebration here at the ELC, a phone, a phone call came in the morning that one of our kindergartners did not arrive on the bus at Pershing Elementary, and in fact, had been killed at home. There's an investigation going, so I'll really stop with that piece of it. But I went straight to Pershing Elementary School, and to be honest with you, I could not leave. And I, you know, and I, it was really a good thing for me to see that, because, you know, obviously, I think Deborah Vereen and Maria Vasquez were really pros in handling this whole thing. But you know, when this kind of thing happens, and I know we can talk about it, but when you're there, it's very, it's different when you see it. It's like, it's also almost like being in a movie, because the entire school was impacted by this young boy. A kindergarten kid who probably had been to school. A kindergarten kid who probably had been to school maybe three months total. The kids were very aware he didn't get on the bus because he attended school regularly. And then the rumors started flying that something had happened, and the kids got off the bus. Well, you know, we've got kids getting off the bus who are upset. Now, you've got 50 kids going in and sharing the story, so all of a sudden, it's kind of like the plague. It's, you have to capture that. And so I just want to tell you, Maria, how, she's probably embarrassed by this, but she was such a pro. She handled that beautifully because I've never seen it in action, but I saw in that day what she did. She, first of all, she communicated with the principal, made sure the principal followed protocol, actually had to calm the principal down. You can imagine, the principal's close to this child as well. But she really, really remained calm, in control, and made sure that crisis team was out there. I witnessed that. The psychologists that we talk about, those social workers and counselor all came to that school and opened up a classroom where kids were invited to come and talk. They covered the tables with art paper so kids could write messages. I have one here you probably can't see. It just says, "Daryl, we miss you." I took a picture of this right here. So the kids were able to express their opinions with the art. They were able to talk to counselors and psychologists, and I thought, what would have happened if we didn't have these people here? They would have been, I don't know what would have happened. Certainly, teachers would have been trying to handle that. So I just want to tell you that. Maria, thank you. Thank you very much. It was at no point in that day could I really step away from that thing and feel comfortable. There was a PE teacher who had disciplined the child the day before appropriately, but felt very, very guilty about it. And so that was a situation that we had to handle. We felt it was best that he leave campus, and I want to tell you that he'd left campus and marched right back on campus. Five minutes later, he says, "I need to be with the kids." And we said, "Then be here with the kids." But we checked on him often in the school, and he seemed to be fine. So that's what occurred that day, and the crisis team stayed around and came back the next morning. I spoke to the faculty at the end of the day, and then they came back the next morning before school to talk with faculty members who were upset about it. So again, I just want to tell you how sad that was, but how proud I was to see, to see us handle a situation, certainly not anywhere near the level of severity that the West Orange was, but it was certainly, it's a model to see. You guys, it's tragic, and it's wonderful to see people's hearts go out and stick together and hang together and make sure everybody is covered. So thanks again, Maria, for taking me through that. And also, James Larson was very, very significant in that role, too. They both were out there all day long. So just wanted to tell you that. Keep them in your thoughts and prayers. We're missing two fine little OCPS kids today.
Ms. Cadel.
Something that Mr. Roach said triggered two things. I think the hardest thing that I've done since I've been on the school board is I've had to go to too many schools where we've either lost a teacher, we've lost children, you know, and to see, you know, I thought it was very interesting that when we were recognizing all the groups, that crisis team was there and they were close. And you go there and your heart hurts, and you don't know what to say, and you don't know what to do, but you just know you need to be there. And as horrible as it is, our professionals do a phenomenal job in the very hardest and worst situations. The guilt that you talked about with that teacher, there were two Cheney Elementary School students who were hit going home, and the mom had come up with the field trip money for the kindergartner because she had forgotten it that morning, and they were walking home after delivering that field trip money. And that teacher felt so responsible for that accident. And to this day, I'll never forget how the team at Cheney came around her. It was, it was very, it's tough. And, you know, we never know what tomorrow's going to bring. You just don't know. The second thing, and it kind of talks about the emergency thing and stuff, and I've been monitoring a Facebook page more because of the building of the Wedgefield School. But there was a posting on that page, "Does anyone know what's going on at East River? They're on a Code Red." Well, it turned out that it was a scheduled drill, but it kind of goes to talking about social media and where this all plays because then it was getting all kinds of play back and forth, and some parents were saying they didn't, their children didn't hear, other children did. Towards the end of the conversation, one of the teachers from East River got on and said, "The announcements were made that it was a drill." And as we look at security and as we debrief on what happened at West Orange, I'm wondering, what is the protocol for a Code Red practice drill versus the school is really locked down? And I know in the Glen Ridge situation last year, eventually, there was a call that went out that said, you know, "Your children are safe. They're in the classroom." And then I was sitting in a session in Tampa after the West Orange, and the chief of police from Palm Beach County Schools said that when the call goes out, they announced to the parents that there will be a follow-up call when it's safe to come to school to pick up your children. You know, "We will call you." And so I just wonder if we're looking into what exactly that protocol is, and should our parents assume that unless you get a phone call telling us different, that it's just our normal operation of we're practicing Code Red drills? And I don't know what the answer to it is, but, you know, in this scary time of where people are concerned about what could happen, I just wonder if that's something that superintendent you would like to look at with your staff and figure out.
Jenkins.
Absolutely, Ms. Cadel. In fact, we are preparing a briefing for board members under Mr. Eugene so that everyone is clear on that protocol. Schools do have specific guidelines. We're going to be reviewing that with board members as well. We've looked at those issues very closely.
Because I did write Principal Lundman and said, "This is going on on Facebook. Is it all right if I post and say it actually was a drill that day?" And so I did. I didn't do it until I had checked with the principal through email, but just kind of said, "This is going on. Do you want me to respond?" And he said, "Yes." And I just, I wrote a post that said, "I've spoken to Principal Lundman. It was, in fact, a drill." So...
Add to that, you all may recall last board meeting, we announced that we would be doing a work session. We're actually going to do an executive session on our crisis response procedures. So we'll ask staff to go around and touch base with each of you to find out what specific issues you'd like addressed. This is a great example, Ms. Cadel, of something we need to be briefed on. And, you know, the focus is going to be not just on the district's role when a crisis occurs so we have a thorough understanding of it because usually the microphone is thrust under our faces, but also it's going to be on what our role is when a crisis occurs. So that's just another good example of why we need to do this. And that will happen, board members, sometime before the end of March. There's no real urgency to it right now, you know, but it'll be an executive session. Yeah, well, hopefully there's not. I was just thinking that as I said it. All right. Is there anything else for the good of the order? All right, then with that, we are adjourned.